9:34 a.m. Welcome, everyone who is joining us either remotely or on Wincan. We are happy to have participants. And we are going to jump right into reviewing the agenda for today. So we're going now public comment followed by the superintendent and chair remarks. We have a consent agenda which involves some meeting minutes and disposal of surplus technology. We have report update and action items from the special ed parent advisory council and Mr. Holland Hurst has joined us for that. We have a Lynch project update and Mr. Hay from Tappah Architects is going to join us for that. We have a discussion of recommended policy changes from the field management committee to a jointly held school committee select board and field management committee policy FH. And myself, Mr. Nixon and perhaps Nick from the rec will be able to join us for that. We have a capital planning report from Mr. Nixon. Anticipated agenda items for our next meeting, our future meeting dates, and then adjournment to an executive session. And with that, I would like to go directly to public comment. I will review our public comment policy for the community as we do before every meeting. Public policy shall be for a period of no longer than 20 minutes. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name and address. While we are remotely on Zoom, we also ask that you have your camera on when we elevate you to speak. Citizens shall speak for no longer than three minutes and no citizen shall speak more than once without permission of the chair. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens in the committee, but it is the citizens' opportunity to express their opinion on issues of school committee business. We generally have a sign up for public comment. We had Susan who had requested public comment who wasn't able to use the form. So I am going to ask Dr. Hackett to elevate Mr. Phillips to public comment. I believe that he is in the attendees and Mr. Phillips, if you would like to join us.
He is with us.
He's with us.
Yep.
Hi, Mr. Phillips. If you're able to put your camera on and identify your name and address. And then we'd love to hear what you want to share with us today.
Good morning. My name is Ian Phillips. I live at 10 Manchester Road in Winchester, obviously. I have shared with each of you 14 photographs last night along with the description of each of those photographs. And respectfully, I would ask that they whether the committee has in fact received them.
I can't speak for every committee member, Mr. Phillips, but I did see that it did go to all of the committee members. And I know that I have seen that as well.
Thank you. I will assume that that they have been received by everybody and I don't have to describe those pictures. But what I do need to say is that the community, we need your help. And when I say your help, I don't mean words on a piece of paper. We need your help to be actions that back up your words. We need the words, quote, respectful of the neighborhood to mean that you, the school committee are contacting the field renters, the coaches, and the police. We need the words respect for the observation of religious holidays to mean not renting out the field and lights on Yom Kippur, the holiest Jewish holiday, as has been done in the past. We need the words parking is not permitted in the neighborhood adjacent to Manchester Field to mean that the school committee and the police will work with the community to prevent parking in the neighborhood from happening. The pictures are clear that that is not happening. We need the words about warnings and hearings to renters to mean action by the recreation department. And we need the spoken words of the past to be fulfilled. There were no public meetings to get input from the abutters and neighbors after 12 months of the previous policy as required in that policy by to be done both by the school committee and the select board. There have been ineffective notices of meetings. And I know that the rec department can speak to that. We need the net, the net fixed on the north end of the field. This has been a recognized problem since at least 2018, four years ago, when the DPW and the school superintendent said they were getting bids for that work. We need the school committee and the select board to help get resident parking only. Regulations implemented as they are in other neighborhoods next to fields as they said that they would. As directed, the community did exactly as told and filled and filled out all the paper with signatures from every homeowner. And it went on deaf ears. We need the school committee to treat the neighborhood children the same as all other Winchester children. We understand that you cannot regulate a parent, whether a parent allows their children to go to sports practices to 10 o'clock every night. I get it. However, you do have the power to make sure that each child living in the neighborhood is not kept awake until 10:00 p.m. every night by lights and noise. That is within your jurisdiction here. So I ask for your help today. I ask that you send this policy back to the field committee and direct them to do two things. Direct them to meet and work with the community to implement actions, actions to make things better for the community and its children and to develop a policy together that is appropriate for the neighborhood setting and its proximity, as you saw in the photos, as little as 15 feet away from the field to the to the field as recommended in the field assessment report. We ask, the community asks for your help and we ask you to reject the policy as written. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. We appreciate you being with us today and we hope you're able to stick around as an attendee for the agenda item where we'll be able to discuss maybe some of the things that you have brought up today. I am going to ask, there was, there is one other attendee, Dr. Hackett. If that individual would like to raise their hand if they are also here for public comments, since we know there may have been an issue with the forum. If not, I will move on with the meeting from there. Seeing no hands raised at this time. Do you see any other hands raised for public comment, Dr. Hackett?
I just want to be sure I have.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I hadn't missed anyone. Then we will continue on with the superintendent and chair remarks and I invite Dr. Hackett to jump right in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everybody. I really, it's been a busy summer. We have been working on a lot of projects here. We've been having, doing quite a bit of hiring. Professional development has been in full swing with a whole host of different opportunities for staff and teachers. But the only thing I really want to just mention today is, as you know, and as I have distributed to you and to others, the LBLD program review was completed. We received the document about near the end of June around the same time as school actually kind of let out. We are now internally in the process of going over that review. We will review the recommendations internally and we will then also work on a a plan to plan is probably the best term for it. Once we have a sense of where we are with the recommendations and kind of thoughts around potential action, then we will also work with WIMPAC most likely directly. We'd like to think about, as you know, we also do not have a special education director on board yet either. So we are a little bit short-staffed and in trying to really give the report its full due. But we have enough, certainly enough history here, enough understanding, I think, of the programs. And then also all of our LBLD staff and supervisors are generally not working this time of year, although I seem to be getting a lot of emails from them just same. So once we have our people back, we'll develop a plan for how we can sit down with them, the people who are most affected and who are the experts on the program itself to, along with the building administrators, to go through and develop some actions around the recommendations. I, you know, in general, thought the report was was well done and just would remind the committee and the public as well that this was a report that the school department commissioned all for itself. So we are very interested in making sure that we continue to to improve, not certainly in this program, but also across the board, but it was, this is not a compliance review. This was a review that we asked for and we're pleased to have received it. I think overall the report was well done. I think that a lot of voices were heard. And I think I believe well reflected within both the report and in the recommendation. So we'll be coming to you with a little bit more detail around the plan to plan over the coming meetings. And we will also, just so you know, and I think, I think you do know, but we have also posted the report. It's on our special education page of our website too. So it is fully public and I'm happy to answer any just general questions, not detail. If anyone from the committee has any questions. Hearing.
I guess you may move on, Dr. Hackett.
Well, I would move on by introducing you for your comments.
Excellent. The first statement I'd like to make is to the community that while we are all remote today, I would just like to let you know that Mr. Nixon is very, very remote today. And so his camera is off by necessity, but he is, he is able to hear and join us and fully participate in the meeting. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. I also wanted to let the community know and the school committee members that there are openings on the education facilities, planning and building committee. We frequently refer to this as EFPBC. There are two openings. One is a select board appointment and one is a moderator appointment. As we move forward with the Lynch project, it is very important that we have community members involved in this committee. They do a lot of work around that project and all of our education building projects in town. So if anybody is a part of that committee, I just wanted to direct you to the town website where there is more information about how one would apply for those openings. I also wanted to let the committee know that we are also moving forward with the August workshop. Dr. Hackett and I are in the process of securing a location for that workshop. And we will let you know as soon as possible. The last thing that I wanted to let the committee know is that you should have received the superintendent's self-evaluation as we move forward towards his summative evaluation at the next meeting. If you have any questions about any of the documents or evidence that he's provided to us as part of that process, I would encourage you to reach out to Dr. Hackett, have a conversation with him. If there is additional evidence that you are looking for, please do not hesitate to reach out to him this week and and see what you can do about obtaining that. I will be looking for your written evaluations by Monday, August 1st so that we can prepare for the summit of evaluation on the 4th. That is all that I have today, Dr. Hackett, other than to thank all of the staff. I know that it is sometimes, sometimes I think that the community thinks that the school department takes the summer off. And given the activity in central office, the meetings around Lynch, the professional development that I see happening and the summer school programming that still continues on. I am always duly impressed that all the education staff not only has a full school year, but a full school summer. So especially in this heat, I just want to thank everybody for all the hard work they've been doing to get ready for the next school year and to support students throughout the summer. So I just wanted to offer that up today too. And with that, we will move into the consent agenda. It was suggested by Mr. Hopcroft that we may want to try taking minutes via consent agenda and other items that would fit under that. Today, we also have the disposal of surplus technology, which is in your packet if you had more information about that. I also would like to thank Mr. Brady as our new recording secretary for preparing and getting the minutes out to us for the May through June meetings. I am happy to take a motion on the consent agenda, Mr. Hopcroft. I don't know if you're interested in making that. Yes, Ms. Bollinay. You'll need to, yeah.
Yeah. I just have one comment on the June 28th minutes. Under the voting of the school physician job description and stipend, it says that it was an increase to the stipend of $5,000. And I guess I thought it was an increase to $5,000, not an increase of $5,000.
That's correct. We can make that edit.
So very small.
Yep. But important.
Just didn't want to misunderstand.
Yep.
So I'm having to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended by Ms. Bollinay on the minutes.
I second it.
And I'm going to need a roll call vote because we are remote, Ms. Bollinay.
Hi.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion is carried. Thank you very much and thank you to everyone who worked on those items. The next item on our agenda is we are going to welcome Mr. Holland Hurst as the new co-chair of the Winchester Special Education Parent Advisory Council with an end of year report. I'd just like to let the committee and the community know that the parent advisory council is a, is, has been required by Massachusetts state law since 1986 that all districts maintain a special ed parent advisory council. It's open to all parents of students identified as eligible for special education as well as interested parties. As part of their statutory mission, they advise the school committee on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities. And we are happy to have Mr. Holland Hurst here today to talk about what the PAC has been doing in the community and their board for the last year. Mr. Holland Hurst.
Morning, everybody. Thank you. You can go to the next slide. All right. So as, thank you, Michelle for that intro to WIMPAC. It is a state mandated group. We recognize that there are somewhere between eight or 900 students in the district currently with disabilities. That's diagnosed disabilities, right? There's certainly folks who in certain situations might have difficulty. That's just alone, 18 to 20% of the student population. And we're here to serve and support all students. And there are certain times when issues rise to the top of our list of concerns, right? Where we, we receive feedback from parents and and others about certain issues, certain topics of discussion. Autism has been a focus for us recently. But that doesn't mean we stop advocating for all issues and all students with disabilities in executing our mission and our duty. We at WIMPAC, we really appreciate the support we enjoyed from Pam, the former administrator administrator of special ed, superintendent Hackett, school committee liaison Karen Bollinay's and longtime friend of the PAC and former co-chair, Michelle Bergstrom. So in this year, we're also very excited. We're welcoming a number of new board members, Shannon Stott, Christian Barrios, and Kelly Fitzpatrick. So the, the executive board is currently co-chaired by myself and Stacy Irazari, who you probably all know has led and really formed, been the, the voice and the face of WIMPAC for a long time. And she is ending her co-chairness, although as a, as a condition of me becoming co-chair, she promised to help and support me and me peppering her with questions. And Michelle, I'm sure I'll, I'll throw some at you too, as, as a, as a former WIMPAC person. Communications Chair currently is Roseanne Sauer. I act as a technology help. Our events chair is Jennifer Infantino and marketing and social media chair is Amy Moy. Head to the next slide. Just a, just a few updates for you for, for the WIMPAC year in review. We generally hold monthly meetings as a board with, as I mentioned, a school committee liaison usually administrator of special education. And we have done sort of a number of things via those monthly meetings, including advocating for changes to the district wide policy on bullying prevention and response plan, which were adopted. We engage with the bookends downtown to encourage development of a book display on inclusion. This came out a little bit of, of you, maybe some of you have read Amy Moy on the board, wrote a great book with her daughter, The Pocahontas Penguin. And I think they were highlighting that. So they bookends had a nice display on inclusion in general. We engaged in some advocacy legislatively regarding the higher education funding provisions of amendment S2915. We continued our engagement with various organizations and towns and boards within towns to seek input with respect to inclusivity. We did a performance of advocacy regarding good faith negotiations with occupational therapists and physical therapists in the district and created an initial advocacy and framework for potentially bringing a peer-to-peer mentorship program to Winchester called Eye to Eye. So more to come on that as we, we develop it. We also developed a regular schedule of monthly newsletters to help promote events, share updates from the administrator of special ed, highlight local businesses embracing inclusion and to share, you know, one of the big benefits of WIMPAC and the sort of CPAC mandated groups is sharing resources, right? For, for parents to use. So we've been making a strong effort to do that. We're expanding our digital reach and visibility by regular sharing resources and events from neighboring, right? Like other special education parental advisory councils around through our social media accounts. We're reorging our website as, you know, everyone's always reorging a website, but we're trying to really build up, as I said, a robust resource for, for parents, whether that's referring to other CPACs or, you know, advocating for local resources themselves and participating in the search for a new administrator administrator of special education that's ongoing. As far as workshops and events, we've done a number of them from topics, including executive functioning, understanding the IEP. We've held conversations with representatives from DESI regarding tiered focus monitoring. That was in April. Also in April, a webinar on college admissions for complex students. And just in June, we hosted a presentation on celebrating strength with Dr. Lisa Diker and her son Joshua. Some more to come for events as well. And then next slide.
Is there another slide?
I can just, there is, but I can just talk about it. It's just a what's next. I think, I think Stacy had added it late, so I'll just mention.
All right, okay.
So WIMPAC was excited that the district recently shared the LBLD program review. Frank, you just mentioned that. So we're in the, in the process as probably a lot of us are reviewing that and more to come in partnership with that. We look forward to the school committee and the school system identifying the next area of special education services that to be evaluated. We'll continue to work on expanding visibility and reach to seek to bring back some in-person events for the coming school year. We ended the year with a focus on college readiness and transition. I mentioned an event we had and will continue to develop our competency around this topic. Really popular topics that we tend to get questions about are understanding in evaluating an IEP and also articulating measurable goals for students. So we'll plan to build some additional supports and resources around that. And then we look forward to reviewing DESI's tiered focused monitoring report when, when that's available. So lots, lots of stuff for the year for WIMPAC and lots more to come. But we appreciate the, the support from the school committee for sure.
Thanks so much, Andy. I really appreciate you being here with us today to share that information. I, I have been able to be at some of your board meetings over the last year and it's exciting to see the resurgence of a lot of interest in the PAC following the pandemic. And that you have, that you're building up such a great network of board members and people interested in taking leadership roles in the PAC. Because as a school committee member, I do feel like it is an excellent way to build relationships between the school committee, the district and parents of students with special needs. So I appreciate you taking on the leadership of it. I know that it's a big So I appreciate you taking on the leadership of it. I know that it's a big task and a big volunteer role, so we welcome you to that role. And I would like to open up to the committee if you had any questions for Andy. I promised him that we don't bite. Mr. Hopcroft?
I'll just echo the, the, the chair's remarks and say, you know, thank you so much for stepping up into this leadership role. It's, you know, the WinPAC is a very important institution for our town. It's, you know, a great resource for parents who want to learn, you know, how to navigate the system. And, and I think, you know, you know, coming to one of those seminars on understanding IEP or whatnot is really, really helpful. As a parent, sometimes you, you don't really know, you know, you don't know what you don't know and, and how to navigate the system. So it's very helpful on the parent's side. I think it's also really important for the committee because we, we look to you as a place where, you know, we have parents with special needs are, are coming, they're sharing their concerns and, and so you're able to, you know, start to sort of vet out, you know, what are some of the areas where there may be additional policy needs and, and able to help bring that to us in a, in a way that's more actionable for, for us to, to be able to work with. So it's a really critical role and we, we, we need people like you and others who are stepping into leadership positions. So thank you for your, your leadership there.
Any other questions?
I'm sure just to say anywhere, you know, we are, we're looking forward to the central office and working closely with you and, and your group, you know, we've been, I would say Winchester has been fortunate, it appears to me, to have had such a good, strong relationship with WinPAC. As some of you may know, that is not always the case in every school system and certainly we are better and the kids are better off for it when it is true. So welcome in your new role. Let us know if there's anything we can do to help support you and I know that we'll be talking soon.
Yeah, I saw that you, you linked to our website from the school district website. So that's, that's great. That's, we'll add to the resources available for folks.
And I would also add that just for parents, that the WinPAC website is an excellent resource. And as Mr. Hollandhurst just noted, you can link to it directly from the district website now. And a, as you said, it's always a work in progress, Andy. But the work that you guys have done over the last year has really strengthened your finding information. So thank you for that also. Ms. Bollene's?
Did you get muted?
Mute.
Mute, sorry. So Ms. Bergstrom and Mr. Hopcroft already said much of what I wanted to say, but thank you very much for the past, for the, your participation and now for your leadership and to all the members of the WinPAC Board and of the membership during this past year. It's been a very welcoming and informative group. And I would also just say the newsletter I thought was really, really well done. So in addition to the website, I think the newsletter is just a wonderful source of, point of information. So.
Yeah, Roseanne, Roseanne did, did a great job on that, but yeah, you're, I, I agree. It's a, it's a good group.
And Ms. Moy is handling social media well, too.
Yes, very active.
Yes.
We, we, we were advocating for her to, to also co-chair and she said, I'd like to, but I think she'd been put on a, a pitch count by her husband of not, not getting too involved, but she's super active on social media and many, many other aspects as well.
And she did come and read her book to us when it was.
Oh, did she?
So we were able to appreciate that and I believe it just won an award.
It did, did win an award, yes. Yeah, she's a notable author.
Do any other members have any other questions? Well, then I will just thank Mr. Hollandhurst for joining us. Your Don't Be a Stranger, I know PAC usually comes once a year, but please let us know if there are reasons to attend moving forward. Mr. Hopcroft, did you want to say one last thing before we move on?
No, I, I thank you to Andy and I just wanted to administratively ask the chair. We did the minutes on consent agenda. Was there an approval needed for disposal of surplus technology?
I believe we took both of those, did we not, Dr. Hackett?
That was my understanding of the vote.
Thank you.
There were questions, there were questions on the minutes. There didn't appear to be any questions on the surplus technology.
Thanks.
And with that, we will move on to the Lynch Project update. Thank you very much. As we move in towards a 2025 completion goal for the Lynch School, we've anticipated several landmark timeline deadlines this fall and winter. These include that the schematic design submittal to the MSBA will be September first, 2022. The MSBA Board of Directors meeting with the project scope and budget approval is slated for October twenty-six, 2022. And the Fall Town Meeting Vote Project Funding Agreement would be slated for Fall Town Meeting of 2022. As a school committee, we have asked Dr. Hackett at a minimum for monthly meetings to stay informed of the work of TAPPE Architects and the EFPBC and to be able to give guidance and input where appropriate on this project and process. And today we are happy to welcome with us Mr. Hay. Mr. Hay is from TAPPE Architects and will be giving us an update on the project with Mr. Hackett, or with Dr. Hackett and with Mr. Nixon, I'm sure will jump in as necessary. Mr. Hay?
Good morning. Thank you for having me. Excuse me, and I have a frog in my throat from not talking for the last forty-five minutes. So I think what we wanted to do was go through the slides that were presented last night to the building committee, so hot off the press. And there's probably more data in those slides than we need to, to concentrate on this morning. So forgive me if there are too many slides, but we can at least flip through them. And, and I think that either Dr. Hackett or I or Chris would be delighted to answer questions as we go along. But it gives you a kind of a, a picture in time of where we are in terms of the process.
And Charlie, if you send them to me after you're done, I, I'll share with the committee.
If I send you the, the.
The slides.
The file, okay?
Yeah.
I can do that. Alright, so can I share a screen?
You should have the power.
To? Cool. Okay, so what can possibly go wrong?
Yeah, see, don't go wrong with this, but.
What?
Nothing, nothing, sorry.
Quite confident something can go wrong. Okay, so I want to be on. I want to be on screen two. Okay, can you folks see a slide there that says EFPPC meeting?
Can.
Fabulous. And can I advance? No, I can't. This has always been my problem. Zoom slideshow. And now I can. Okay, so this was the, this was the presentation we gave last night and it's a kind of an update, which we're, we're doing every two weeks. And we're sort of focused on the process, how, how the process is going. We're focused on the development of the design, circling back with, with feedback we've received on various aspects of the design. In terms of the status of the project, there's, so, so we went through a two feasibility study phases, as you very well know, because I've talked to you about them, a PDP and a PSR phase. There's a lot of fact-finding going on in those two phases, existing conditions confirmation. We continue to do that. We just did another geotechnical investigation. We've done a flow test to make sure there's adequate pressure out there for fire protection, which there is. We just had a kickoff with Eversource, the utility provider about, they have a series of grants and programs that they will give incentives for efficient, efficiently designed buildings, buildings that are net zero ready. We are, we are potentially, the town and the district is potentially entering into one of those pathways. We've met with Sustainability Subcommittee recently to talk about sort of the building design, systems design. We recently had an operations meeting with, with district staff. Meg White last night from the town updated the committee on the wellfield decommissioning, which is, you know, the, the abandoned wellheads out there need ultimately to be filled with concrete and that's going to happen. That's being worked on. We just, our, our, our food service designer just laid out the initial kitchen design. We have upcoming meetings on security and technology. And our schedule continues to be that we're going to send a package to the cost estimator early next month. And later in the month, we'll get those costs back and that gets bundled up and submitted to the MSBA on or before September one. And that will represent the schematic design. And that estimate of construction and project costs will, will represent the, the number the town would take for indebtedness votes. That would be the, the project funding agreement essentially with the MSBA that has to be agreed to. So, uh, let's see, yours now, what's the problem now? Slideshow, okay. So, so in terms of geotech, good news there, no bad soils to, to speak of that we're aware of, which is a relief. Good soils generally. Really good meeting with, with Chris and Pete and, and Andrew and Dr. Hackett about operations what they need, what their sort of lessons learned from the other school projects. Talked about roofs. We talked about systems. We talked about janitors closets, lots of good stuff that's being integrated into the plans. The wellheads, we talked about last night, just the fact that and those have abandoned wells. These are the ones that BHB could find, the engineer who was commissioned by the town to do this study. Getting, filling the wellheads is a pretty straightforward exercise. This is not a big drama. It just has to be done at some juncture. There's that initial kitchen design for the Lynch. The anticipated strategy is that the Lynch may continue not to be a full-service kitchen initially, which it isn't now. However, it will be set up to be if in the future that's flexibility is desired by the district. Here's a site plan. And this shows you the development of the site. This, this included, this includes input from town agencies. We had a regulatory meeting that included police, fire, DPW, Conservation Commission. And so we integrated comments from those meetings into these plans. But it, it, it shows you the kind of layout. So the existing building, you see my cursor?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, so the existing building is the red dashed building down there. There's the Lynch today. Here, the white building is the new Lynch. So we'll continue to come in off of Horn Pond Brook Road. We'll continue to come in off Pond Street. There will continue to be two loops the way there is now today. And the parking is sort of split about fifty fifty between the east side and the west side. There is a connection between the east side and the west side that can either remain open or it can be closed. We talked about having gates there. And that will just be an operational question. I know there's some concern about residents using it as a throughway that makes people nervous. That's going to end up being an operational question, but we need to at least provide a connection for public safety, for snowplows and the like. And it may ultimately give you more flexibility to connect through. But there's a nice big area in the front for play. For, uh, we were talking about a turf field as well as a multi-grade play structures. We talked about developing in the rear on the north side facing the soccer fields. Nice outdoor classroom spaces, a big sort of outdoor learning courtyard space. And also a little playground right next to the soccer field. So if you have a, a child playing soccer and another child who wants to play on a playground, you can do that. Services to the west and, and back of houses kind of to the west. So that's sort of the way the site plan lays out. We've talked about turning radiuses that I won't bore you with, but we've run turning radius kind of geometries for all sorts of different vehicles per the request of the building committee and because we needed to. And we walked, walked through those last night, anywhere from a box truck to a semi-truck to a fire truck to a garbage truck. This shows you, so we know, you know, you know that we know that this is, uh, has lots of regulatory challenges. And one of the questions has been, well, how close is our new development to the one hundred and five hundred year floodplains? This is indicating the red dashed line, red dashed hatched area is the five hundred year floodplain. The blue dashed area is the one hundred year floodplain. We are building, staying well out of the five hundred year floodplain and the site development is generally staying out of it with the possible exception of that little play area. But there's no, there's no regulatory restrictions to having a playground in a floodplain. It's just your foot, you know, under the worst case scenario, your, your playground could get wet. This also shows us some of the strategies around rain gardens, stormwater detention, underground detention, which are being developed. So, so as we go through the schematic design, we're developing landscape design, civil design, systems designs and architectural designs. This is the current floor plan layout and I think I've shared in early days some concept that's not inconsistent with this. The main entrance lobby is to the left here. A secondary lobby is to the right. This is a direct entrance to pre-K. It actually has pre-K admin at the entrance. She includes a couple of, a health area for, for pre-K. It includes a secure entrance and a pre-K administrator. And the whole, all the yellow boxes there are pre-kindergarten classrooms. In the center, the sort of pinkish boxes are kindergarten classrooms. This big brown box is the rest of the balance of administration. We have music on the first floor and then of course a gym with a platform and in the front cafeteria. And on the far left, those gray boxes are all back of house. So we'll be able to have a public entrance that actually could get zoned off. And you could close the rest of the building and just access the gym, the calf, the music, if you so wish. And you can also then go upstairs and access art and media and have it closed off. So there is this sort of public zone that could be used weekends off, off hours that allows us to keep the rest of the building shut off, which is pretty nice. So the second floor is kind of lower elementary. So that's going to be first grade, second grade, third grade. Particularly in second, third grade, that kind of pod has a nice breakout space or sort of some flexible learning in the center. Each floor has a teacher planning room in the, right at the center point, really between the two pods that has, has kind of conference space and copy space. And media is on the second floor as well as art. You come up a, a, a main stair and you arrive at art, you arrive at media. So, so that's the, so that's how the second floor lays out. And then the third floor is upper elementary. So we have fourth grade and fourth grade pod and a fifth grade pod. And on each of these floors, these orange boxes are the special ed functions as well as small group learning spaces. So those are distributed throughout the building in a pretty consistent pattern. And there are some, they're distributed across these pods. So one of the interesting things is this possibility of some kind of a roof with an outdoor classroom on the upper floor, which, which could be really very nice for fifth grade as this kind of fifth grade academy as these kids move on towards middle school. So those are the plans. This is kind of the early stages of ideas around what the building could look like. This will remain conceptual through schematic design and won't really be fully developed until the project moves forward, but we need to have enough information to get a credible cost estimate at this phase. So we are talking about materials. We're talking about massing. As you can see, these classrooms have these kind of bays that are angled. And that does some interesting things for us. It sort of directs the views of the kids. It creates inside these classrooms a little zone for, for a kind of a little breakout space. And it kind of begins to avoid western light a little bit and gain eastern light. And ultimately it sort of breaks down the scale. So we have a fairly big building for a kid for elementary school, three stories. And we're looking for ways to try and to break down the scale a little bit. And then this would be the rear facing the soccer fields with a gym with the classroom wings. We're seeing would, we're seeing, we're doing stairs that access onto the roof. would we're seeing, we're doing stairs that access on to the roof. And and we potentially may be doing solar panels, although that is unclear yet. These are kind of kind of ground view images of the classroom wing in the rear. This is kind of a ground view of what it could look like at the entrance where you walk in, you see the library upstairs. Admin is below, nice cafeteria with some high windows and low windows on the left. And then you see receding on the right, the the classroom wing. And here's another kind of angle of that view, which you see those classrooms. So one of the questions was material palette, so we did look on behalf of the committee at what kind of materials we could use. Most of it is masonry. There is the possibility of putting in some Trespa, which is kind of a phenolic rain screen panel system that is very much looks like wood to try to warm up the the parts of the school a little bit, we thought about sort of the bays maybe in the library having that on it. We will, we we have a little picture VO here showing what's the gym because we're going to need some kind of a a translucent glazing system there to avoid glare, of course, we talked about maybe brick plus some sort of this is a calcium silicon product that that is a very nice product that gives a kind of rusticated effect at the base of the building. We talked a little bit about the possibility of that roof deck. We're doing a roof deck now in a high school where you can actually get out on it as rails and you can actually go out there. And up there on that upper level, we have potentially that opportunity. And I showed a trellis that we're also doing at the same high school, just to show it wouldn't look like this particularly, but it will, the idea of some sort of cupboard area that has some light dappling light coming down. And this is a library we finished recently that has those Trespa panels that look a little bit like wood. So I think that kind of, yeah, that got us to the end of the of the presentation last night and I went through that very quickly. But I'd be happy to to answer questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hay, and I'm just going to ask committee members so that we can keep the slides up if you'd like to refer to them. If you would just raise your digital hand for this conversation so that I can make sure I see an account for everybody. I know Mr. Nixon, your mobile, you can just find a spot to jump in, so if committee members have any questions, if you'd like to raise your digital hand. Ms. Bollonez.
Oh, I just wanted to say or I have, I guess I'll ask my very, very minor question first. I was just wondering from a from the perspective of having been in the VO building for many years and some of the work with enrichment programs that come in, sometimes they want to darken, sometimes there's a need to darken a space for certain programs. And the VO building is marvelously bright and light and this building also looks bright and light, I think that's great. But will there also be the capability just to be able to darken some spaces or a space so that a program that comes in or any of some of the curricular work that the educators might be doing can have the flexibility to have some like a darker space?
Yes, absolutely. That will definitely, we always have room darkening capabilities for any any classroom space, so yes.
That's great. And also I just wanted to say I really appreciate all the thought that's gone into the planning and what you had described about the well, well, water, the wellhead decommissioning, the kitchen, the spaces for each of the or the spaces that are on each of the floor floors for the educators and then also just to meet the needs of the students, so I can tell that it's a very thoughtful and detailed and just hard working just a lot of hard work from all the members, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Hay, this is a a great update and you know, I appreciate all the hard work that has gone into the design so far. I was curious, you know, given the, you know, the fact that this building will be in service for fifty plus years. Yeah, I was wondering if you could go into a little bit more on sort of the sustainability aspects here, I know you mentioned you know, net zero ready. You know, you talked about some of the infiltration, potential solar panels, the sustainability committee. But I wonder if you could just give a little more update on, you know, the thinking as it as it pertains to your climate and sustainability and and, you know, the use of this building over a a good period of time in the future.
Right, so that is a, that is a little bit of an ongoing conversation. And the 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 premise is that this building will meet an EUI target that will make it net zero ready, which will meet all of Winchester's sustainability goals. Whether it has renewables or not. In other words, whether it has solar or any other kind of renewable ends up being more of a question of A, do you do it as part of a project, B, can you even afford it? C, does it make more sense to do it after the fact as a power purchase agreement? So that has not been fully developed, but we're going to have a highly efficient building. We're going to have a building that is could possibly be legal, will certainly be lead silver. And I think we will have a building that that is all electric, it will have highly efficient systems. I think it will have as efficient an envelope is can be designed as efficient, a mechanical system is is can be developed right now, given the technology, so fundamentally it will be a very sustainable building, whether or not it's going to have solar or anything else is is still an unknown. And it does in part come down to can you afford it and and when is the right strategic time to do it, there's also a conversation going on with the sub with the sustainability subcommittee about whether it makes more sense to put solar panels on a roof or whether it makes more sense to put them on parking canopies. And so and not, not, not all of that has been fully vetted.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Dr. Hackett, could I ask you for just a moment too? A couple of times, Mr. Hay has mentioned the sustainability subcommittee of the EF PBC. Those I assume are public meetings, so if any members were more interested in the ongoing conversations about sustainability, would that be something that a school, a school committee member could attend?
Absolutely, yep, just let me know, they haven't really had a regular schedule, but they they do meet and they are posted.
Okay, great, thank you, I just wanted to make sure if members wanted more information about that where they could be hear those conversations. And then I believe, Mr. Brady, you were, your hand was up next.
Thank you, I just had a quick question about the bathrooms as a administrator at an elementary school who on a weekly, if not daily basis is witness to the amounts of fun elementary school students can have in a bathroom when they're all in there unsupervised. Is there any thought to making more individual bathrooms for the students versus kind of the communal bathrooms that we traditionally see? I think that would just be a a great positive for all students involved as as many people who build a communal bathroom in their house. We don't, so I just, if there's any way to lean towards that, I think that creates a lot more comfort for students and also cuts down on the basically one place in the building where first graders can be unsupervised and kind of have the run of the place.
It it, we can have that conversation with the district, I mean, the the problem is it takes up considerably more square footage. You for the same amount of fixtures, you're doubling the area or something like that, right? So it would be a challenge from a square footage point of view. We've also talked about just doing, you know, unisex bathrooms with with with, you know, privacy stalls, which you could do if you wish to. And we've done bathrooms with no doors for better supervision with just sort of like an airport bathroom, right? So you 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 go around a privacy screen, but there are actually no physical doors to open or close. So we're happy to have those conversations with the district.
And I'd like to piggyback on Mr. Brady's question because that was a question I had as well. Do we have individual bathrooms? Because particularly in elementary schools, we often have students with special needs who may require an individual bathroom either for social emotional reasons or developmental reasons. We certainly have students at elementary school who may be not, may identify differently than the gender they were born with. Are we making accommodations for that on every level of the building?
The answer is yes, so we always end up with at least a gender neutral bathroom per floor for students, we will have individual bathrooms for staff, for faculty, obviously. And in the lowest level kindergarten and pre K, all those classrooms have individual bathrooms. And the connections program, all those classrooms have individual bathrooms. So we will have, I'm not sure the gender neutral class bathroom shows up yet on these floors, but we've talked about it, so it will. So yes, there will be a multitude of of options.
And I did also want to compliment the team, I did notice that there was also a mother's room indicated as an individual space as well, which I think is of a huge benefit to our staff, so.
We have one on the ground floor and one on the third floor, so that's basically a nursing room. And it's right next to teacher planning, so it's sort of a logical place.
Yep. And I also noticed, I'd also like to my support of a kitchen that is full food prep ready because a part of, I I think an underlooked part of sustainability is sustainable meals and food supplies and composting and being able to wash our own dishes. So I am really supportive of that. I I heard you mention that it would be ready for that, which I assume means that all the spaces will be available, perhaps not all the equipment is in place, is that what that means?
We have to have that, we have to have that conversation at the moment, we're, I think we're, we're going to estimate it as if we're installing all the equipment.
Okay, great. That's good to hear. And my last question is inclusion is definitely a a passion of the district. We like particularly Lynch Elementary has always been sort of a model of inclusion for the district and I'm curious what kinds of spaces that you're building into the interior of this building and the exterior that will promote inclusion. I'm curious to know if that playground space, I noticed that the playground is further from the building, which might make it harder for kids with special needs and if it were closer to the building, things like that, are we still going to be looking at all the inclusive elements, both interior and exterior of the building before we get to a final plan?
Well, sure, well, the building is entirely accessible, fully accessible on both the exterior and the interior. We could certainly flip flop playground and 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 field as a, for instance, if we wanted to, we do have pre K play is close to the building. And these these rear spaces are fully accessible. And the playground, the playground design ultimately, the selection of equipment and the like, which doesn't usually happen at this phase is always keeps that very much in mind.
Great, what about the interior of the building, are there breakout rooms and places? I didn't, I noticed you said sort of the corner of the classroom, but is there any designated Blake breakout rooms that?
So there are breakout spaces in the center of the classroom pods.
Okay.
And those are spaces that you can go out for a small group, you know, instruction for individual study. It we, they're not going to accommodate entire grades out there, but but they can be, those are, those are areas that can be furnished. And we have those on both the second floor and the third floor, so all the sort of, so grades one through five have those kind of spaces.
Just add to that, that came out of the visioning session early on, so that's, you've had that in the design for quite some time.
Correct, I mean, the only tricky thing is in all the teachers, every grade, we we encourage putting cubbies into the classrooms because it allows us to do a lot more in the hallways, but every grade wanted cubbies in the hallways, so we've got cubbies in the corridors, but it means we taking up a lot of space that we could be furnishing for for teaching and learning and just lining it with cubbies, I'm afraid, but that's just, that was the the strong, the strong view of the staff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hay, I see Mr. Hopcroft has his hand raised again.
Question, following up on Mr. Berks from Mr. Brady's comments about restrooms, I just want to, if I'm reading the schematics right here, is is it the case that every bank of restrooms has two individual restrooms, it looks like right on the hallway in the middle there? Is that how it should be?
It does, so those are staff restrooms.
Okay.
So those are individual staff reference, what we need is we now need a gender neutral bathroom, which I'm not seeing, but we talked about adding. And then we have the group bathrooms for for students, so fifth and fourth, there's one, one group of bathrooms for second, third and first, there is a first grade set and a and a second and third grade set, which was kind of a request that first grade have its own sort of self-contained pod. And then, as I mentioned, K and pre K have individual bathrooms that are accessed from the classroom itself.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any additional questions from Mr. Hay? This, just a reminder to the committee, this isn't the last time we will be hearing from Mr. Hay as they move along, so if you do think of questions following this meeting, I would encourage you to get them to Dr. Hackett. The one last question I had, I just, before we go, before I let you go, Mr. Hay, it struck me. I know initially at one time when you'd spoken to us, you talked about a space that would perhaps serve double duty as an auditorium and a cafeteria with back to back space. Is that part of this plan somewhere or was there not enough space in this building for that?
The decision was to put the platform with the gym and the reason for that, which is consistent with what you've done at other, you know, VO. The right, what that does is it allows maximum capacity.
Okay.
Of of for for, so you can really get nearly the whole, you can probably get the whole school in there seated on the floor. So cafeteria, you're going to fit a lot less students. And we did do one school where we did it back to back, but that that only worked because we didn't need a kitchen. We have a kitchen in the way in this case because we're so, we're so constrained for for area on this site that this was how we had to lay it out. But I think most, a vast majority of the elementary schools, we do the preference is to put it adjacent to the gym just because of capacity issues.
I think it's also a good thing that is that we couldn't do it on both the cafeteria and the gym, because
Dr. Hackett was concerned about that idea anyway.
I was just, I know that in the past, members of the community have been interested in an auditorium perhaps at Lynch, and I know that we're so constrained on space there, so.
Yeah, so the, so we can't, yeah, we would never, you you're right, we couldn't fit it on the site, but also the MSBA doesn't reimburse for auditoriums for elementary school or middle schools for fixed seat auditoriums. So you would have had to fund that on your own and sought permission of the MSBA, which probably would have been a pretty complicated process.
Right, and I thought that back to back was sort of the solution for that as sort of an intermediary, so I just wanted to be clear on why we'd moved away from that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate this. If there are no further questions, then I am happy.
Michelle, can I just chime in with one request? I'm not sure Charlie cheered this, but Charlie, did you mention your approach in section to handle the great difference between the stage and the main space there in the gymnasium and the ability to sort of roll equipment on and off the stage from that common floor level, as well as to allow students with mobility impairments to get on and off easily. Yeah, it's a little bit of an unusual, this is not entirely typical, but we have, we have a strategy where you come down a few steps to a lower lobby to go into the gym and what that means is the platform can be on the main level. And that's nice for rolling in in and out instruments and the like from music. Students who who need to get from the gym to the stage are still going to either are going to go up a ramp or they're going to go up some steps next to the platform. But if somebody wants to get onto the platform, they can walk straight on, which is kind of neat. This also does another nice thing for us, it lowers the grade here of the doors, which gets us closer to the soccer field, because one interest is, well, could we have a scenario where there was use of the soccer field and people could come in the back door and use the restrooms? Um and the rest of the building could miss, could possibly be closed off. And the answer would be yes. And we can do that in a way that's fully accessible. Um so lowering the grades is kind of a nice outcome there if we can do it.
Thank you, Charlie. Uh it it it, it's a unique and pretty creative solution, I think.
Mr. Nixon, and I'm sorry, before we move on, I know you're mobile, so it's hard to raise your hand. Was there anything else you wanted to add about the process or the project before we move on?
No, no, I, that's it. It was covered pretty well. Frank was quite right. The Sustainability Subcommittee, that's a public meeting. Our meetings are are posted. When we have them and we develop agendas, um had a, a pretty lengthy and actually very productive meeting um last week. Ken Pruitt, our Sustainability Director, is a part of that group, as well as some E F P B C members, and we get input from Pete Lawson and Chris Conlin as well. So make good progress.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hay. We look forward to hearing more from you as the progress uh moves forward on Lynch. It's really exciting to um see it become a building and not just a outline on a space. And then we know that there's a lot tremendous amount of work going into that. And we really appreciate you hearing from us as well as community members and educators. Um and putting that together with the architects and engineers to really make a building that um our students and staff can be comfortable in and um also um fit in nicely with that unique space over at Lynch. So thanks for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thanks. I'm going to drop off if that's okay with everyone.
Yep.
Thanks. Thank you.
And so I would like to move us forward on the agenda. The next on our agenda is um a first reading of um a school committee policy that we share jointly with the Select Board and the um Field Management Committee. In our policy manual, it is policy F H. It is the use of athletic field lights at Norton Stadium on Manchester Field. Um we did hear some public comments and receive a few emails on this topic. Um this this morning and in the past week. Um so I would encourage any school committee members, if you have not seen um those emails, that you um take a look at them so that we make sure that uh the community is, thoughts are recognized in this process. Um this policy is a policy that was developed by um a former school committee back in twenty fifteen. Um when this policy was initially developed, it was in the, in the anticipation of lighting Manchester Field. Um it was not yet lighted in practice when the policy was first developed. Um this policy was reviewed with slight updates in twenty eighteen. Um at which point the field was lighted at that time. And we also developed a policy around that time um for the new lighting that was coming on Skilling's Field. Um the Field Management Committee has met and decided that they would like to have a review of this policy. Um they investigated changes to the joint policy. They held a public hearing. They held an additional meeting where they also heard from citizens and recommended um the policy changes that have come to us. In your packet, you have a copy of the original policy as it was in our policy manual that has been redlined with changes. You also have a copy of the new policy F H as recommended by the Field Management Committee. You also have a copy of a memo um from Nick at WinRec um with some additional agreements that they um are recommending to us and the school committee um after hearing from the residents. The highlighted changes in this policy are specifically around um the removal of seasonal requirements for lighting, the removal of days of the week use and the time at which the lights will turn off. Um the Field Management Committee is recommending to us and the Select Board um these three additional operational um agreements that are not specifically part of the policy, but more um involve our good neighbor policy with the Manchester Field neighborhood and um the operations of the lights while they're there. I believe that um Nick is with us if we have any questions specifically for him. Um and Dr. Hackett, did you have anything to add? Or Mr. Nixon is our Fields Committee rep to that intro?
Michelle, I would just add, I think Mr. Gill is also, he's joined as a uh a viewer and he's a longtime Field Management Committee member. So if there are particular questions that uh you know, Nick cannot answer, uh Mr. Gill's been on it longer than Nick has. Uh Mr. Gill's certainly available to uh chime in as well if, if he, if he cares.
Thanks, Mr. Nixon. Dr. Hackett, did you have anything to?
No, I don't have anything to add. It was a good, it was a good summary. Um you know, we've uh have been at the table through the discussions. You know, I know that there has been interest in uh the length of time that the lights are on uh for a few reasons. Uh not the least of which is to um to also allow uh the town to generate some additional revenue um for, with the idea being that the field turf would uh be replaced by or help be offset uh with, with revenue, um which does make sense in a long-term plan. Fortunately, uh the, the turf does need to be replaced and and uh fortunately, the Select Board has taken action on that, which I think is a great idea, using um some upper funding to do that this year. Uh the turf is in really tough shape and getting to the point where it's almost not playable. So that's um, that will be a welcome, welcomed upgrade to the, to the field itself. So this, the timing on this uh seems appropriate, kind of goes hand in hand so that um you know, ten years from now, we're not in a situation where uh we have no fund and no revenue to draw from to, to do another turf replacement.
And Miss Bergstrom, forgive me, since I'm driving, I'm not raising hands. Um I, I just wanted to circle back on some of the comments Mr. Phillips made. We kicked off the meeting today. He, he did a good job summarizing a number of concerns that fall even outside the lights themselves. They've been articulated by other neighbors at our meetings, uh the Field Management Committee meeting last week. Um although there was a very frankly thoughtful presentation and communication on a number of concerns, whether it's it's noise, it's litter, it's parking, and it, and even something as granular as where activity happens on the field, when it happens. The fact that uh we've got activity that kind of coalesces at one end of the field closest to the neighborhood rather than the other is something that I think is a legitimate observation and concern in it. That's something Nick and his team are looking to address um with the installation of net at the other end of the field. So the point that was made at the last meeting was that at the end of the day, this policy is one really about lighting. There are few um issues outside of lighting, school committee has authority on. We certainly have some authority on parking when we're talking about parking on district property. Um so many of the neighbor concerns really are sort of tangential to the field itself. And so our, our suggestion, and Nick um has gone to follow up on this, was to prepare a side letter to the Select Board. Mr. Mucci was there at the meeting. And he agreed that really what's appropriate to address these concerns is to identify them to the Select Board, let Mr. Mucci and his board have a conversation with management. And have a, a better understanding of what needs to be addressed by Select Board policy versus what needs to be addressed by management. So for instance, and we saw that some of the images Mr. Phillips sent last night. We have no parking posted. People are parking where they're not supposed to. That seems like a police enforcement issue, unless a policy issue. I just use that as an example. So Mr. Mucci seemed to be in agreement with that. Um I think there's real appreciation of it. Sort of empathy for some of the concerns that neighbors have adjacent to Manchester Field and presumably there'd be a separate parallel path to address those at the Select Board too. So.
And I think um, I think you may not be able to um to visualize the slide that Dr. Hackett has up right now, Mr. Nixon. But I believe a number of those solutions are in the um, the memo that Nick had prepared for both us and the Select Board, including work with the Police Department to actively enforce parking and noise rules on Manchester Field. And the abutting neighborhood, whenever the field is in use and without the need for residents to initiate complaints and to support the Manchester Road Neighborhood's um application for residence-only permit parking in designated areas on Manchester and Cutting Road. I believe um the item on this list that uh may fall under our purview, Dr. Hackett, would be to encourage users to organize activities at the north end of the field. We could certainly um make sure that Mr. Aria is aware of that concern of the neighbors. Um when um students are using the field, if we are only using a portion of the field, certainly rental use of the field would fall under the rec department. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And I'm sure if we let Mr. Aria know about that, that um they can focus on that as appropriate.
And he's part of this process and is on the committee too. So um he's aware of all these recommendations. And we haven't had a conversation yet about implementation, but once uh this gets finalized, we will do that.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee? About this policy today. This is our opportunity to discuss this policy. Um we will not be taking a vote on the policy today, but if you do have any questions or concerns about it, um this would be our opportunity to do so. And just please raise your digital hand. Uh Mr. Hopcroft.
Um just a clarification. What does it mean that the school committee will work with the Police Department to actively enforce parking and noise rules? Um I am, I'm supportive of the Police Department enforcing that, you know, the, the parking and and noise ordinances. But what, what would we do um to work with them?
I, I'm going to bounce that back to Dr. Hackett, but I think I've got this correct is that as I mentioned just a minute ago, Mr. Hopcroft, I think that would be a recommendation more towards the Select Board as they work directly with the Police Department on things like that. Um that only item two, the encouraging users to organize activities at the north end of the field, might be something that this committee and the school department have control over. Is that correct, Dr. Hackett?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, you know, we certainly can uh do a uh, we, we certainly could raise this issue with with families and and at athletic contests, we can make this part of kind of a regular communication uh that, that we put out. Um we don't obviously have the staffing to, to the Spurstrom's point to uh be looking for um traffic violations. But uh we also know when we have events at the field that we know are going to draw a lot of traffic to. Uh not every event is the same. Uh graduations are obviously different than um, you know, some events that uh may not draw much, uh much um of a, of a crowd. So we can kind of be also um just mindful of, of those events, which we, I believe we already are. But and I know that the Police Department uh through the acting town manager have had this conversation as well.
So one other question, if I could, um while I have the floor, um are the lights all or none? Or can, if we're using the north end of the field, um for instance, could just the north end of the field lights be on? Or is it all or none?
I believe they're all or none. I don't, um I'm, I would have to double check that, but um I quite certainly are all, all or none.
Well, there's one other wrinkle to that, if I can interject. I, I believe um Mr. Gill will be able to confirm this, but I believe, I, I believe there can be a practice setting. I don't know if that was implemented. So uh teams may practice under a slightly lower level of light than what's required for an M I A A game. I remember we had that discussion during the permitting phase. I'm just a little ignorant of what was actually implemented with the lights, but, but we don't have the capability. Um nor I think was it recommended to have lights on or off at one end of the field or the other, just given who's using the field.
Um given that we'd like to have all the information on this today, I um will recognize Nick or I, I see Nick. Would you like to elevate? Nick from WinRec, please. The Chair of the Field Management Committee may be able to help us with that one, Mr. Hopcroft.
Nick, you are all set.
Thank you. Um yeah, so just uh on the lights, yeah. Um Mr. Nixon is correct that we can't, um it's all or nothing with the lights at this point. We are in uh discussions with the company that controls uh the lights and installed them, Musco, to see if it's possible to reprogram them um so that we have additional um controls over just having the two poles on the north side lit or the two poles on the south side lit, depending on what type of uh program or practice that uh that needs them. Right now, we're, we're still in um communication with them. They are going to have to send a tech out. Of course, with anything electrical, anything's possible. It, it's going to come back to what is the cost of those being done and, and how would we be able to fund it? So um we're in kind of a uh, you know, a a phase where we're trying to figure out what the best course of action is and, and then develop a plan. We'd love to be able to do that. Um lights at Chacha or some of the poles can be lit um for softball only, for baseball only. And so I think there is a way to do it. It's going to come down to how much is it going to cost to get those reprogrammed and, and, and set? As i- and and for those of you that don't know, our lights are controlled remotely. Um so that we set the schedules based on the light schedules based on what is actually happening on the field. They're not on all the time till ten. They'll be set based on what programs are renting the field. So uh we set that in advance. It's a on, online platform. And then um, you know, when the, when, when we, when the lights are scheduled to go off, they, they first dim to about um twenty percent less than the little lights and then they will go off. Um I'm not sure about the, if we are allowed to have programs, the dim, dim lights. I, I'd have to uh defer to Jay Gill on that one. I don't know if it's enough lighting to be safe to have, you know, lacrosse and, and soccer or whatnot during a dim delights session.
And Miss Bergstrom, just on this subject, since we have Nick, one of the concerns that we've heard from the neighbors, and I haven't heard it before, is we have occasions when the fields are vacant, but the lights are on. And that's certainly not something we want to see happen. So there's language in this policy. Certainly about forfeiture if plans fall through, but if, if a group ends early and the lights can go off, I'd love if Nick could talk about that. He, he's one of the few people that have control to be able to shut those lights off.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for bringing that up, Chris. We actually have a second part of that memo that we put together to school committee and Select Board about what the field committee is going to do. And one of the things that we would like to do is change, is, is uh recommend some changes to the field policy doc that addresses users who um are not fulfilling their uh, their obligation with communicating to either Marguerite or myself when they are not using the lights that were previously scheduled, so that the lights are on with no users. Or uh in the case of some, some sports, you know, they have specific amount of time that their game runs. Sometimes they end a half hour, forty-five minutes before the, the end of the permit. And uh we've, we've asked, it's always been in the, the policy for them to communicate with the light. The, the folks that are in charge of setting the lights so that we can turn them off, so they're not um wasting uh power with no one using the field. So we're going to address that as a field uh policy and uh look at um doing some sort of additional charge for those that are continually not following those, those uh those uh policies.
Good question, Mr. Hopcroft. Um I uh, and I just want to clarify too, um for the committee and for anybody listening, that um Nick referred to the field policy document that's separate from our um the policy that we're speaking about today. This is a document that's held by the Field Management Committee um that's referenced in our, our document. And you can link through to see um if you'd like to read that complete document. But that's a document that they hold um that talks about rental rates. When Nick was here to speak to us before, we saw uh the portions of that that um they had updated. Um so just so you know, those are two separate documents. And I just wanted to quick follow up on Mr. Hopcroft's concern, Dr. Hackett. Would it be possible, you had mentioned communication to families when we have games and things like that regarding Manchester Field. I imagine, given our new website and our capabilities, it might also be um helpful to the neighbors and to the parents if we had a a map of that field that marked out and read the areas that were no parking areas during sporting events and games. I know sometimes um though we are a small town, just seeing the name of a street or um may not, um may not click for everybody. Some people are visual learners. So perhaps we could um include a map that would designate the best areas for parking, both for um good community relations with the neighbors and as um Mr. Phillips' pictures pointed out, sometimes safety and security concerns during our games as well.
We absolutely can do. That's a great suggestion.
Ms. Bollinaze.
Um I was just going to put comment that one other part of our policy, which I think actually we have already addressed now uh between Nick and Mr. Nixon, was that um uh we are, or our athletic director is one of the two individuals who can turn we are, or our athletic director is one of the two individuals who can turn off the lights or they're designated. So I think that is besides moving or promoting activity on the north end of the field. I think that was another area where we potentially could, or where the school department could potentially have some impact. And other than that, I just appreciated the email from Mr. Phillips and then also his public comments. I did think, as Mr. Nixon was just, was talking about, and you, Miss Burgstrom, that some of the suggestions and recommendations that were in the memo were more in, under the purview of the select board and the town. So I'm very glad to hear that the select board will also be taking, or that the select board will also be taking up some of the suggestions here.
Thank you, Ms. Bollinaze. Are there any other, I'd like to make sure we
Like to make one other clarification. So there has been, there was also a neighborhood concern about snow removal. You know, either just, just noise and or damage to the field, which we can all appreciate. And so the committee, committee did discuss that. No one will be removing snow from that field other than if in fact there should be snow removed, it would be DPW, but it really does take special equipment. And so conversation with Mr. Gill basically was, because and this is an issue, of course, because what we're talking about is a policy in which there may be more usage in the winter. So if there's snow or ice on the field, the field's just not going to be used. Is that fair, Nick?
That's correct. It's actually number two A on the recommendations that we are going to consider for the field policy document. And the reason why we're not putting this directly into the Knowlton Stadium lighting policy is because we have multiple turf fields. There could be additional turf fields at some point in town as well. And we have four, four lighted fields as well in town. So we wanted the, if we're going to make a change, we wanted to encompass all of the fields that we supervise. So that's why those changes will be discussed at our next field policy committee and put into the field policy document as they are approved.
Thank you. And thank you for that, Mr. Nixon. We do have that up on the, the screen right now, that the use of turf fields in winter, including prohibited organized use of fields when covered with snow and adding that no entity other than the Winchester DPW shall clear snow from the turf fields as well. Are there any other questions or concerns from school committee members about the policy as presented? Then I would just like to add, Dr. Hackett, in relation to hearing some of the neighbors' concerns and the photos and some of the organizational management issues that the school department and the school committee could work with the neighbors on, I think in addition to some kind of map or indication for games about where parking is. I think I'm certain that Mr. Ari already does this, but just reminding students to be good neighbors as well. I think sometimes, you know, when our kids get on a field and they're enjoying sporting events and what they're doing, it may be hard to remember that there are neighbors directly abutting those fields as well that may not be involved in those activities. So I think any proactive engagement that we can do as a school committee or a school department, particularly with our high school students who use that field fairly regularly, just reminding them to be good neighbors in terms of trash and noise in the neighborhood when they're approaching for practice, approaching and leaving for practices and games. And reminding each other that we are a small town and that we just need to be respectful of each other. Would also, I feel like, could really help out in some of those concerns too.
I would agree with that. I do also want to just say that, you know, I, I know that Mr. Mahoney spends quite a bit of time over the course of the year reminding our entire student body, those who are both participating and those who are going as an audience of all the things you just said. So I, but I do have a couple additional thoughts that just went through my head that I not intended to share out loud, but I've made a couple of notes along the line of what you just suggested.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much for joining us today, Nick, then. We do have this on our agenda, on our future agenda items to be scheduled for a vote on August 4th. I would encourage any members that in digesting the conversation that we've had about this today and in any of the concerns to reach out to Dr. Hackett. If something arises that, following this meeting before our vote on the 4th, that you would like to understand better, so that we can make sure that everybody is comfortable with the policy as presented when we come to vote on August 4th. Certainly, we will have an opportunity for further discussion at that time as well. But it sometimes is helpful to have a little time in between these, as is our common practice, to be able to, to be able to digest this information and think about it. So thank you very much, Nick, and thank you for all the hard work and community engagement you've been doing throughout this process. And for the thoughtful recommendations from the field committee and the field management committee to be able to respond to the residents on these issues. And with that, I would then move us on to our next agenda item, which would be a capital planning report. Each summer, the school committee regularly reviews our capital planning queue and priorities. The priorities as presented in the memo today have been reviewed by Dr. Hackett and the Department of Public Works. These priorities are then communicated through the capital planning committee and will eventually rank all the capital requests for town departments and the school department to submit to Fall Town Meeting. Mr. Nixon submitted, for the record, a thorough document about both the current requests, a little bit about where those requests are headed, and a little bit of history of where those requests have come from. If Mr. Nixon, you'd like to take an opportunity to speak a little bit to that memo?
I'd be happy to, Michelle. Thank you. And just to clarify, so this memo, so, so this has not been shared with the full capital committee yet. We are meeting tomorrow night and Frank and I would like to share it with capital, but we weren't going to do that until we had a chance to discuss it with everybody today. The work that's in the memo, though, is familiar to capital and really should be familiar to every school committee member. Because really, none of it's new. As Ms. Bergstrom just said, we're, we're basically moving the football on some things. So just my elevator speech real quickly, since I'm behind the wheel. We're recommending four projects to advocate for for this capital cycle. The McColl Middle School Historic Facade Repair. So we're talking about the original 1932 facade. It's a historic facade. As you all remember, we've got failure in unit basery, the bricks and the precast, the stone. Failures of flashings and step flashings, some of which are copper and lead coated copper, original to 1932. So we've had some limited degree of water intrusion in the building and with our freeze thaw cycles, we have some spalling and cracking. So needs to be repaired to sort of restore it back to its original condition and prevent that deterioration moving forward. There's also some deterioration that's really been accelerating in the ballisters along the front of the building. As you face McColl from Main Street on the left and the right, and this is an important safety item. Those are precast ballisters again from 1932. They protect someone from falling into the area away. And Winchester, like many other towns and institutions, over the years have sought fit to pour concrete in places where it was not originally there. It's so, that's happened at Lincoln, which we'll talk about in minutes, happened at McColl. So when McColl was originally built, we did not have concrete right up against those ballisters. That traps moisture. Some of that concrete has settled over the years. It actually pitches towards the ballisters. And again, with freeze thaw cycles contributes to the deterioration. So, you know, just a whole slew of deterioration and failures in this facade. So we previously prioritized, capital supported at town meeting funded, actually, two years ago, preliminary investigation, and then at last town meeting, we actually funded full construction document to go out to bid. That is, this project, I would say, is 98% shovel ready, just waiting on a few precast details for the ballisters. So this really could go and certainly would be my recommendation, given the deterioration at McColl. This was a top priority for us last year, as you'll note in my memo. In terms of cost, this work is not cheap. So current estimate based on the construction documents for last month is around $825,000. A little less actually, but we make some allowances for contingencies and some soft costs and the AEC during CA during the work. Like White, and I feel like that's a good number. So that's where that comes from. So certainly would recommend and ask for support there. And then we pivot to number two from Lincoln. Some similar issues here, a little bit different in terms of the timeline. So again, as we know, Lincoln's a historic building. The building was renovated substantially from about 1998 to 2000. The building itself is in, is in good shape. There are some mechanical needs that are out there as there are every, you know, 20, 30 years. But the problem we've been struggling with at Lincoln is that the vast majority of the flatwork, and when I say flatwork, we're talking about walk off pads, walkways, sidewalks, exterior stairs, steps, cheap walls, handrails, sort of all the stuff we walk on when we're outside of the building. The flatwork is in very poor condition. It is deteriorating and that deterioration is accelerating. DPW was able to confirm about two or three years ago that much of the work was actually installed without proper sub base. We actually had some cheap walls and stairs that were concrete that appeared to have been poured directly over loom, which is, you just never do that. You've got to excavate, get the proper sub base material. There's some reasons we think why that happened. The later innings of the Lincoln projects saw lawsuits between contractors against the GC. I think we actually went out of business. So I understand anecdotally, there were some contractors that were looking to just get the work done quickly and get the heck off site. So it looked good for a while and then DPW began to see some trouble. This includes settlement of some of the granite treads as well and the main stairs that come up to the building. Again, the building itself is fine, but the main granite treads have also begun to settle. And once water gets in there, it begins to accelerate that problem. And of course, with this deterioration of the flatwork, we now have ADA violations. We have trip hall hazards. And we have some walk off paths that have actually sloped towards the building and so they're collecting water against the building. So our approach really was to, rather than go in, tear out and rebuild, as an example, the three meandering pathways with multiple steps that you see. When you look at the building from Mystic Valley Parkway, these are three pathways that serve relatively few people when you consider the limited number of parking space, the street parking along Mystic Valley Parkway. We actually wanted to do something here to really simplify this. So rather than tear out and rebuild three pathways and three sets of stairs, we wanted to go back and simplify this. So this, this proposal basically takes the monumental stair down to Mystic Valley Parkway, a design that's much more in keeping with the original design of the building, if, if you will. The meandering paths that are there crumbling today actually are not original to the building when it was first constructed. Confirm that through, you know, original photographs. So it's a lot of work. It's difficult. It's sort of, it's fussy work is what I would say. And it's important we move on this because for three or four years, Mr. Lawson was coming before capital on behalf of DPW and he was looking for a few, you know, tens of thousands of dollars here and tens of thousands of dollars here to repair and patch something. And then for the three, three years that had fallen apart again. So we're chasing our tails unless we just tear this out and rebuild it. So Gale Associates has created a very detailed set of documents. They're not, this is not shovel ready like the McColl project is. This is more kind of design development work, but really sufficiently detailed with a good estimate that we're comfortable on the cost. One other element of this that's kind of exciting is, is we all know, we have a real limit for place space at the back of Lincoln. DPW just put down sod again at the back of the school and we know that will all die within a year because of all the foot traffic. So we heard loud and clear from the principal and assistant principal of Lincoln, the need for some space for students, smaller group spaces. How diverse. And so this project includes an opportunity to create a bit of an outdoor space for a class on the, on the facade that actually faces Mystic Valley Parkway, kind of at the corner near the O'War Memorial, with some kind of low elevation seat walls. That I think is very kind of thoughtful and responsive to the landscape. So some nice elements in here that try to give us a little more flexibility in terms of where our kids can be when the weather's nice. If teachers want to take the class outdoors or even during recess, there's an opportunity to monitor them out there. So that's a long speech on the Lincoln piece. You see in the memo, we had previously shut off oil at Lincoln and converted gas. There's a fuel oil tank that has to come out of the ground on the Washington Street side. That is under this, under a sidewalk which is already crumbling. DPW is working really hard to get that tank out of the ground, perhaps as early as August. If they're able to do that, they'll just go back with some asphalt and hold off on any concrete work so we can get that done with the larger project. That's sort of it on Lincoln. The two roof projects that come next, again, these are priorities. So last year we had six priorities. The top four were funded. Five and six were not. So priority five was investigation and preliminary design for McColl Middle School roof. And following that, the Ambrose roof. Capital appreciates the need to do this. We just had some higher priorities last year. So these just kind of fall in place in line. McColl, as you know, is a large project, multiple roof types, some flat, some pitched, different roofing materials. So it's important that we get in there quickly and kind of evaluate the condition. Don't know that everything needs to be replaced. Some of it may be more limited to some repair, but we'd like to get that started. And the same is true for Ambrose, that roof will soon be 18 years old. That's pretty much it.
Thank you very much and thank you for the thorough memo on all that too. The history was great. And it's good to place those projects in a timeline because I think many times we're able to get some site work or design funded and it's hard to put them all in a timeline to get to where the outcome will be too. So I appreciate that, Mr. Nixon.
And I should add, Miss Bergstrom, one other thing, if I can, there, there, the capital planning committee, we will be appearing before the select board sometime next month to advocate for a debt exclusion override for a handful of really large capital projects. Led, led most notably by a significant HVAC upgrade project at Town Hall, which I believe the project cost is well over $5 million. So the stabilization funds cannot support that. So we have begun to have a conversation at capital about going to the select board with not just that project, but a list of others. Should there be interest among the board in lumping some in? In other words, maybe one or two municipal, one or two school based projects. You know, we could, I suppose, in a stretch, pay for the McColl facade, that that's a hefty price tag and it limits our options for other projects. And certainly Lincoln at 1.2 is a big price tag. So I wanted to share that with the school committee because how this is ultimately funded is not yet known, but it doesn't distract from, you know, the priority of getting the work done. And if the board should wish to put that on a debt exclusion override, I think that would be very encouraging. And it frequently allows capital then to dig a little deeper and start advancing some of these other projects that we're interested in.
Thanks, Mr. Nixon. So our work today as a committee is to determine if we agree with the recommendations that Dr. Hackett, Mr. Nixon, as our rep to the capital planning committee and their work with DPW have brought forward to us as priorities. We will be taking action on this item today. So I will be asking us to vote these priorities in the meeting. So at this time, if anybody has any questions, if you'd like to raise your digital hand or comments on these priorities, please do so. I am seeing no questions or comments for you, Mr. Nixon. I think that I, I do not have any additional questions or comments on these as well. Having been on the committee for a few years, these all seem to make sense in our larger, our larger plan for school based capital projects. So I really appreciate you bringing them to us. If um if none of the committee members do have any questions and Dr. Hackett has nothing to add, I would accept a motion from the committee.
I'd be happy to make a motion that we approve the four capital projects as presented in such order of priority and that we send that to the capital planning committee later this afternoon. We would be actually discussing these in some detail with Frank and possibly Andrew. Not tomorrow, but next week.
Second.
Um all in favor? I'll need a roll call vote. Mr. Nixon.
Hi.
Mr. Hopcroft.
I.
Ms. Bollinaze.
I.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
And the chair votes aye, and the motion is moved. Um we appreciate all your work on this, Mr. Nixon, and um how close to these projects you've been. And um we really appreciate you um keeping school committee concerns at the capital table. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Berks. From, can I ask Dr. Hackett, since I'm behind the wheel here for a few hours today, could you kindly forward that memo to uh Mr. Too Good? Yeah, and Roger McPeak can ask him to distribute that to capital today. I think they'd appreciate it.
Will do.
Thank you.
Um moving forward, um I, the committee may have noticed, we um have made some structural changes to the way our agenda is presented. One of those is, the next item um is that we are trying to move forward um with anticipated agenda items for the next meeting to help both community members and school committee members plan. Um so you know what is headed just for the next meeting here on our agenda. So our plan for the next agenda would be the superintendent summative evaluation. The school committee policy FH, the use of athletic fields at Newton Stadium on Manchester Field, that would be for a vote on that item. We also are so excited to finally be welcoming MCIEA for their presentation on the new dashboard and our student data on um on how our students are are interacting with the, our classroom environment and their teachers and our schools and how educators are as well. So that's exciting. Um and I would like to know if there are any other agenda items that anyone has to add for the next meeting. If you have agenda items that you think you may have for future meetings, I'd ask that um you bring those to Dr. Hackett or myself, and we will get them on the plan. Mr. Brady.
Just to clarify, August 9th is 9:30 in the morning, right?
Uh that is correct. It is in AM. That must just be a typo. Thank you very much. You're on to the next item already, Mr. Brady. You're moving us along.
Want anyone to think we're getting wild at 9:30 at night.
Um any other items for the, for our next meeting on August 4th that anyone has that we missed? This may not be an exhaustive list. Um we will, um there may be some items that we do need to add, but that is what we anticipate. Um our future meeting dates, as Mr. Brady points out, are August 4th at 7:00 PM. That's a remote meeting. August 9th at 9:30 AM, um that is a, also a remote meeting. And just so uh committee members know, we do expect there will be an additional executive session with that meeting. Um August 30th, we have a 6:00 PM school committee workshop. Um Ms. Bollinaze, before we adjourn, did you have something else to add?
Oh, um I was just thinking for the anticipated agenda items for the next meeting. Um we had had our policy subcommittee meeting the other day, and I believe we were talking about bringing policy JJF on student activity accounts to the next meeting for preliminary reading.
Okay, that will be ready for the 4th.
I think that we were talking about that.
We would, I thought we were talking about doing it on the 9th.
I thought we were too. That's why I was.
Okay, my apologies. I thought.
That's okay. No worries. Just making sure we're all on the same page there. Um so um with that, we will need to adjourn to executive session for the purpose what to discuss contract negotiation strategies with non-union personnel. I will need a roll call vote to adjourn to executive session, and from that, we will adjourn from our meeting. Uh Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Uh Ms. Bollinaze.
Hi.
Mr. Hopcroft.
Hi.
Uh chair votes aye, and with that, we are adjourned at 11:25 AM to executive session, from which point we will adjourn from the executive session from our meeting. Thank you very much, everyone. And thank you to all the community members who joined us today. It's nice to see people engaging in the process. Thanks very much. Enjoy your summer.